Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Athletic and Extracurricular Committee Meeting. Just to remind the audience that we have two topics to discuss tonight. The athletic fee, participation fee, and then a proposal for a girls varsity wrestling program. The format for committee meetings will be the board will have discussion and dialogue, and then upon completion of the board's discussion, we will open it up for the public to make comments or ask questions. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to the chairperson of our Athletic and Extracurricular, Mr. Shawn Mattson. Mr. Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the order of the Athletic Committee Meeting for this evening. And hand it over to Mr. Mattson.
Thank you. So if we could put up that spreadsheet that was in the weekly update. So I'd ask Vicki just to kind of survey the school districts in our area. This, so we charge, I think it's forty dollars, and that's to participate in athletics and extracurricular activities. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we assess that one time regardless of having activities to do. So this comes up every year, and I, you know, and I think it's been coming up more. I get more phone calls and emails from parents about, you know, this fee. Because there's other expenses, you know, like I was talking with Tara about the posters. You know, there's all these expenses that you have anyways. So that's why I asked Vicki, like, how much are we spending on extracurriculars and athletics? And what do we actually collect? Because I thought that would give us some perspective.
Sorry. In the PDF, it's on two different pages.
Oh, okay.
So...
So that's the past, is that the past five years?
From 2016, 17 to 2021.
Okay, so you're between one to two percent of the total operating budget?
For extracurricular and athletics, correct?
So then Vicki and I were talking, does it make more sense to leave that money in the parents' pockets for expenses that they incur anyways? If you need a new pair of cleats, or you know, whatever it might be? That was our thought, and that's what we thought we'd kind of throw that out for discussion.
Can you remind us which groups this is collected for?
So, all athletics. It is supposed to be any after-school activity, so musical, marching band.
The clubs too, any of the clubs?
It really should be up, any extracurricular activity is supposed to. And I don't, I don't go through who's turned in money and who's doing activities that's handled at the high school. So, I don't honestly know for sure, but...
Do we know where this originated and why? It's got to have been around for twenty, thirty years maybe, or more? Uh, well, it was around, it started when I was a principal here. Probably in '03 or '04. And the board, as I remember it, it was, it was part of some austerity measures that were taken because the budget was in really bad shape. So they were looking at different ways to generate revenue. And this, as I remember, the discussion was, that's when this came out, to best of my memory.
And I would actually say that if I just, sorry to interrupt you, it may have even been a little bit longer because I paid it and I graduated in 2000.
Okay. Yeah, and that was my, 2000 was my first year. Was it a larger portion of the budget then? Well, I would assume so because I don't know that it's been increased.
And how do we determine the budget for the, for this?
So, this is not actually budgeted amount, like, and I apologize, it's on two pages, but these are actual program expenses, so...
So what's that, your coaching and...?
It's all the coaches, all the advisors, all the supplies. It's the entire athletic and extracurricular budget, transportation. That's what it costs to run those programs. So, and as far as I understood from my tenure here was that the purpose of the activity fee was to help offset expenses of the program. So, I mean, when we were paying for activity buses, that would have been considered part of this as well, although we charged it as student transportation, not activity transportation. But, um, these fees that are collected are not even close to even the activity bus costs, right? Which was not the purpose at all. I know people had said that at one time. But, um, it was just the idea that it's going to offset expenses of the program. And when you're talking about $650,000 for these programs and you're collecting $10,000, I mean... My personal opinion is that money is worth more in the parent's pocket than $50, but...
What accounts for the $30,000 to $50,000 per year increase over these five years presented here?
Increases to supplies for the programs and mostly salaries.
Okay, thank you.
What portion of that goes to the actual either team or band or whatever club to spend, like, their budget? How does that determine, because I know like basketball gets a certain amount, football gets a certain amount. How do we determine that?
The athletic director does that.
Oh, okay. How's that happen, Steve?
I'm just given a budget. I know how much supplies each team is allotted, but as far as distributing that kind of money?
Yeah, if you're like, I need to do, how's this $40 flow back?
No, like, out of that, just say that $663,000, how much of that gets allotted to the teams and the band and...
Right, so that, it's based, that usually happens as a discussion between athletic director, the principals, Vicki. Sometimes I get involved, and it's based on need, really. Like, the football program, you know, has larger expenses, you know, the helmets that have to be recertified every year.
Yeah.
So we know that they need a, right out of the gate, they need a larger portion of the pie. So we look at the needs of the program, you know, what's, what's the cost to really run it in a quality manner? And that's, you know, that's how we kind of start from there and build up.
So each year you say, okay, this year, basketball program hasn't had uniforms eight years. We should probably think about putting more money in basketball.
Exactly, and that's, and we have a rotation for uniforms.
Gotcha.
And a lot of that comes down to Title IX. We can't be outfitting any one team with more extravagant things than the others. So we try to buy the same quality of uniform for each team and make sure that they're, they're replaced in a regular cycle. So that drives part of it.
For the people, for the school districts who said no, was there a reason why they didn't have to, like, because they had a bigger budget for their, they just didn't do it? That's interesting.
So Vicki, remind us, where does the fee go?
The fee goes to a revenue line.
Which line?
It's activity fees, it's a local revenue. You know, it just goes to, and then it's used, I mean, in essence, it's used to help offset the program expenses. But it doesn't go to, it doesn't go directly to an athletic expense line or, or... It's in the budget as local revenue, which is where it should be.
Those are questions I get all the time, like, can that money be directed towards a particular team? If they have X amount of students? And, and that's where we go back to, well, does that really make sense? We're going to collect the money and then we're going to give it back out?
I appreciate this explanation because I have parents come to me all the time when they ask where this $40 goes to. They think it goes actually into the booster funds for their teams and they can spend it that way. And I have to tell them, no, we don't get that money. It goes to the school to help with uniform costs and stuff like that, so I appreciate this explanation.
And those expenses are seventh grade through high school?
Um, it's actually fifth grade through high school because there's activities at the middle school. There's separate activities that are run at the middle school, like Lego robotics and there's some other things that are actually fun, fun through there as well. Science and limping, like, those things are considered a student activity as well.
And that the 98% is not covered by the activity fee roughly, is just covered under our budget? Like, do gate tickets cover anything, or...?
So we have a revenue line for gate tickets as well. But we don't charge for all, you know, entrance to, there's no entrance to a cross-country race. There's no entrance to a soccer game, you know, that kind of thing. So, that, that again is fairly minimal. But same essence, it's another local revenue source that helps cover the district's budget. And if you wanted to say it covers part of the athletic budget, then you can. It's all, you know, it's probably at your house, it all goes into one pot and you pay all your bills up to take it in.
So very similar, when we charge a fee to an outside group that wants to use our facilities, it's similar. It's kind of...
It's offset our expenses, correct?
I was just, just for maybe to think about for next year. Every football game that I've been to this year, they have been charging $5. There's nobody that is less than five, and I believe we only charge four, I think.
Very good.
Yeah, so just something to think about for next year, make it an even five.
So what are the board's thoughts on eliminating this fee for our students?
I've always looked at it as kind of an irritating thing.
Yeah.
Just to be honest, you know, forty bucks, yeah, it covers the whole year. But it's, you know, you're kind of like, well, prior to even being on board, it's like, well, wait a minute. Aren't we paying for these programs anyways? What's another $40 really do? So, you know, there's, there's a perception that, oh, you're dinging me again. If you can eliminate that, that can go quite a ways with it.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, that's, that's half a pair of sneakers, or a pair of sneakers.
Sure.
A mitt or something.
We can make up for this lost local revenue in other ways?
Well, it seems like if we've had, historically, we've had, I don't want to call it a surplus, but a little bit over...
We've underspent or...
Underspent, fair, yes, not a proper terminology. That it seems that we're, we're okay in that regard. It just sounds like there might be some...
Maybe because it won't affect the budget that much, so it goes away.
Got you. So then remind the board, is this in policy? Is this in administrative regulation? Where is this...
It's in, it's in policy, and I forget the number of the policy, but I think it's, it's in both the extracurricular and athletic policies and the languages the board may, may set an activity fee for participation. If we take it out, how are you going to handle it for this school? Well, so, because you've got...
Everybody for next spring, you're...
My recommendation would be start in the fall. Collect activity fees for the remainder of this year because for us to return them, to figure out who all has paid and to return them to everyone will be difficult. And it's not fair for fall sports to have to pay them, and spring sports not to, or activities, in my opinion.
So, we would just need a motion on an agenda eliminating the activity participation fee, starting with the 2022, 23 school years.
So it wouldn't be a policy change, it would just eliminate the fee because the policy says we may charge it?
Right.
Would everybody be okay with that as a revolution on our agenda for next week?
Yes.
I agree with the starting next year. I'm just wondering if it would be a boost to the parents if we did refund fall. I know it's probably a team, but I'm just thinking about...
I don't think so at this point.
I don't think that's a good use of the word.
Yeah.
I would hope that you wouldn't do that, but I think...
Yeah, I think starting in next year is the...
That's my reminder, yeah.
So then without objection, we'll have this as a resolution next week to eliminate the participation fee for athletic and extracurriculars. No policy change either. Anything else for the participation fee?
I guess I would appreciate, or I am appreciative that you guys looked into this. I mean, it seems kind of small, but it does, it does make an impact. It's a, it's one less thing that... Well, that's something I've heard over and over. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's a small thing, but a big impact.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's per trial, so...
Well, it is. So I, I guess I appreciate on behalf of, as a parent, I appreciate you guys looking into this.
Yeah.
And making this something that we can discuss as a board.
Just as an addition to your conversation, I just pulled it up. The student activity fees to date this year are $6,900. And the admissions and gate receipts that we've collected to date are about $6,300. So, um... Just to be clear, it's not, it's not a ton of money. I mean, it's a little bit, but, um, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for the board discussion on that. Our next topic is the girls varsity wrestling proposal that we had originally planned for a 6:30 meeting. So I think we will sit patiently in recess until 6:30 to allow our Wasper Wrestling people to arrive and be prepared to present to us. We are in recess. Okay, we will reconvene our Athletic and Extracurricular Committee Meeting with our second topic, and that is a girls varsity wrestling proposal. We'll start with Mr. Carter, and you can, first of all, welcome to our, I'm assuming, Wasper Wrestling Club.
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. We're looking forward to discussing your proposal.
All right, so the wrestling club has approached us about starting a girls varsity wrestling team. So, they did, I think you all received the packet that they...
We did.
Very well organized, thought out, a lot of good information in that. I think what it comes down to, because I know in my discussions, we're definitely not against girls wrestling girls. Makes a lot of sense to have girls wrestle girls and not have to wrestle the boys. The big question is what, what needs to be done, how it would be done? And I think on my part, currently, girls wrestling is not a PIAA sanctioned sport. So, as the state, I think currently there's at least 32 states, maybe more now, that do have girls wrestling as a state sport. So, it's trending that way. Some of the local colleges have started girls wrestling programs like Gannon. So, it feels like it's coming, and this is a good talk on where we're at and what to do, and let's discuss it.
So, so Mr. Carter, can you just maybe tell us, you know, what's, how are we accommodating the girls right now? Just so we understand.
Yeah, currently, the girls, if they would like to wrestle, they are able to wrestle. We just have one team, so they fall under umbrella. This is a wrestling team. They would practice with the boys. Obviously, if there's multiple girls, they can practice partners with each other at practice, but if it's one girl. And even if there's multiple girls, they may still wrestle with the boys. When we go to wrestling matches, if the other team has someone in that weight class, odds are it's probably not going to be a girl, just because there aren't a lot of girls wrestling right now. So the girl would wrestle a guy in that weight class. We treat them just like anyone else on the team.
They're just part of the team?
Yes.
And what else do we have right now?
In the youth program, we have 15 total.
Wow.
What grades is that coming out?
You're, you're talking from fifth up to, right now, we have fifth to a senior in high school in the program. I've been coaching in the youth program for 14 seasons, and the last four years, I've been trying to tell everybody, you got to get on board this because the girls are just exploding. I mean, it's everywhere. And in the last four years, I've seen more and more girls come out, and it's just getting bigger and bigger. Every, every place you go, it's just girls everywhere. Every place, New York, you go everywhere, Ohio, girls everywhere. And it's just gradually building. Last year, we had Kelly Zachrow and her three sisters, and then we had a total of what, nine girls in the youth program? Just last year. And then this year, we had a group that just signed on, and they're all, we have a total of 15 girls in our youth program.
We picked up one more today.
Well, that'll make 16 minutes. So is it, they're, they're, they're out there, it's just you have to get them interested into the sport, and...
Yeah, and I think what's happening right now is a lot of our girls stick with it until middle school. And once they hit middle school, they start to get a little intimidated by the prospects. Now they got to wrestle the boys, and the boys are getting bigger and stronger. And now they feel that they're outmatched, so we get some attrition that way. So, I mean, that's why it's, I think, important that we start a program. There's currently 15 teams in the state of Pennsylvania that have, schools that have declared their intent to have a team or form a team. And what happens in the meantime is it stays status quo. They just keep wrestling as part of the boys' team until the sanctioning comes in. Currently, I think they need 100 schools for sanctioning, and then it would be girls, teams wrestling other girls' teams. PIAA is planning on declaring this an emerging sport, which would help accelerate that whole process. The NCAA already has. But, you know, just this summer, we had our US women dominate in the Olympics. They just dominated at the world championships. The US juniors, which are our high school girls, won the world championships. And all of that is driving more girls to the sport. University of Iowa just formed a team, and...
For a Division One girls' team.
Penn State has announced that they are about to announce a new women's Division One sport. Many people feel it's either women's wrestling or women's rugby. Odds are with Iowa forming a team, it's probably going to be women's wrestling. So once Penn State has a team, it's going to just continue to snowball. It's, I think it's the fastest growing women's sport in the country right now. I think last year it had, I think, 31% growth. So, like Jeff says, we're seeing more and more girls.
It just multiplied year after year. I just, me and my assistants just kept saying, "Man, I'm seeing more and more girls at these tournaments," and it's just more and more every year. It just gets bigger and bigger. I can imagine when it's going to all look like this year. It's going to be huge.
Since we last spoke, I guess, Petticraft formed a team, and I think it's a co-op team. So I don't know how that will work, but I think it's with Sagertown, Cambridge Springs, and... Maplewood. Maplewood, they formed a team. And apparently, Urocoy, Fort LeBeuf, Cory. Cory, maybe Northwestern are all in talks with the sanction 21 group about, you know, the steps to form a team. And from what I have learned from the, the group, sanction PA group, is we just need a school board vote that says, yeah, we have a girls' wrestling team, or a letter from school superintendent on file. But, like I said, nothing really changes. Our current coaches would continue to coach the girls that are there. It's just, um, we would be one of the leaders in taking a step towards getting this sport sanctioned so that these girls have that opportunity in the future.
Mr. Carter, is there a recommendation from the athletic administration?
I would recommend that we do write that letter saying that if it became a PIAA sport, we would definitely be interested in having a girls' team. Like I said, I think it just makes sense to have girls wrestle girls. The only question I get in my head is, we don't know when that will be. And it could be one year, two years, five years down the road. The only thing I would want to revisit is, what, what's our interest like in five years from now? Hopefully, there's still a great number of girls coming through that want to wrestle and are interested. Right? If we have one or two girls, then it's going to be difficult to have a team with just a couple.
Well, thank you for providing the information. It was very thorough and comprehensive, and the board was able to read that pretty easy. If there's nothing else from our Wasper Wrestling Club members, or Mr. Carter, I'd like to open up to the board for discussion. Questions, comments?
I would just say, is that the letter from the tent that was mentioned earlier? Is that what we would be doing?
We wouldn't, you know, from what I understand, we don't even need a letter. It would just, if, if it was just approved that, that there's a team, that's all that... They don't really require anything on your part as to provide it. It's just that the, if you had a school board vote to say yay to a team, the sanction 20, the sanction PA people would report your numbers to the PIAA.
What you said about PIAA is they will not address this issue until 100 schools say we would be willing to have a team. So it's kind of the catch-22, which comes first. Schools, some schools won't say yes because it's not a PIAA sport. And PIAA won't say yes because the schools won't, so...
And, and we have, and we have a little thing where everybody wants, is sitting on their hands a little bit to see, well, let's wait to see what everybody else does. And right now, Butler's forming a team, they're, they're a district away. And they're, and they're saying that most of the competition in the early, you know, beginnings of the sanctioning will be tournament-based. So, it might be that instead of a girl getting one match at a duel meet, she might go to, say, Butler or Erie holds a tournament, and she might get four, five, six matches in. So those competition points that the PIAA requires is going to be a little easier to achieve. So, Ohio also has girls wrestling, I think, currently right now. And Ohio competitions count as well, so if something was a little closer, because I know travel is a concern and who else has a club. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm pretty confident that once, you know, kind of the, you know, the, it's opened up and it starts to happen, you're going to see a lot of schools follow.
So just about like in the interim time, now, if the board wanted to pass a resolution stating we intend to create a girls' wrestling team, is that going to leave them sidelined until...?
No, until it's an official PIAA sport, they continue as is.
They can continue, yeah, because I don't want them to be out of...
No, they would still wrestle with the boys.
Yeah, they'd still wrestle with the boys and stuff. But there are also, within like the last couple of years, there have been a lot of just, you know, tournaments, period. Just for girls, that's it. So, they have, they have accommodated for the girls, saying, okay, we understand there's more girls. So, there's a lot of parents that don't want their girls wrestling the boys. So they just open up a tournament for just girls. So, it's, it's here and there. I've seen girls wrestle boys and I've watched them make them cry. I really have. A matter of fact, I had one of our kids do it himself. He was, you know, hey, who wrestle? Oh, I'm wrestling that girl, coach. Okay, don't underestimate her. And she had a sister, and I watched them both from Salamanca. And by the second period, she had a gut wrench on him, and he was crying. And he come off the mat, and I looked at him and says, uh, it was the girl. And he goes, "She was mean." And I says, "Well, that's the way she was taught, was to wrestle mean." But there, I've seen Abby Malinowski from Fort LeBeuf. She took seventh at the boys' state tournament and then turned around the next fall... She took seventh at the boys state tournament and then turned around the next fall and we wound up going to the female state tournament and won it all. So.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, Mr. President, I have one.
Yes, Mrs. Farrell on the phone.
I just wondered, so what is the difference if we do an intent to form a girls team and just say we're forming a girls team? I'm just not clear on what the difference is there.
According to the informational packet that was provided, this under how do I start an official girls school wrestling program, it says we gotta.
Yep.
Go to the board and then step two is get the girls team approved by the school board as an official team. I'm pretty sure in order for P I double A to recognize that we have a program, once they're they're looking for a hundred schools to have a program, we have to say we're gonna have a program.
Yep. Oh, and I guess, and yes, we, and I go back to what you said, and that was, I guess, I just, I wasn't sure if saying, you know, that we intended to did what it needed to, or we just said we're going to, then, you know, does that give, does that make us want a school towards the hundred? Versus just saying, maybe we will.
Yeah.
I guess that's why I was confused.
And the other thing with wrestling being kind of an individual sport, you don't need a full lineup to have a team. I mean, I don't think there was only one team in the district last year. Only I think only Fort LeBeuf had a full team last year for competition. Some schools only had two or three wrestlers. So there's, out of the fifteen squads out there, I think there's only one or two that have a full lineup of thirteen wrestlers. So many of them, these schools are forming teams with only one or two, three wrestlers. But, you know, once a team is official, the girls tend to come out. A lot of girls don't come out when they know that, well, it's a boys sport, so they hold back. But once you kind of declare it, your numbers do increase.
And I guess, and I guess that's kind of why I asked the question is, I mean, if we're really in favor of doing it, do we move it ahead easier, faster for them to actually form a whole team by saying we're going to do it versus saying we're intending to do it? That's where I just, I wasn't sure which way was the the better way or what way we wanted to go.
Yeah, I would forget the intent and I would just say we're gonna have a resolution to approve of a team. Just my.
If we had form a team, are we then paying coaches?
Can be the same coach.
In my head, it would be similar to track. We don't have a girls head track coach and a boys, we just have a head track coach. Jumpers all jump together and practice together. I think to me, it would be the same with wrestling. We have a head wrestling coach. We have an assistant coach and the girls can wrestle.
So you hire like an assistant that would handle, like a first assistant for the girls and a second assistant handles the boys.
I don't know if we need to break anything up right now with coaches.
I I mean, if the numbers go up.
That's where, yeah.
Then I can always, I mean, then then I would, I would approach the union about their willingness to.
Currently, we have a, uh, volunteer female coach that's willing to help out with the club, with a with a team.
I could, I I I added on Troy's wife and another female coach because it's just uncomfortable for a coach like me. I cannot physically show a girl a wrestling. It it it's uncomfortable for me because I'm an adult and that's a young lady. And I'm not, just not that comfortable doing that. So it's like, I have to have a couple female coaches in here because, you know, I want them to teach them because I'm just not comfortable of physically touching her.
Sure.
So, you know, we have, do have female coaches in there and, you know, like I said, his wife said that she would most definitely help out. I mean, just to be there.
And then do you have to go back to your head coach and give him more money because you're now surprised there's a girls wrestling team? Well, I think, I think we can cross that bridge when we get there. The coaching statements are not huge to begin with.
Right.
We don't pay our coaches based upon participation. Head coaches would be the head coach for football if there's fifty guys or thirty guys.
Aren't some of those pays based on responsibility though? Yep, yep. They're they're scaffolding based on, you know, the time commitment. And the general size of the operation, number of assistant coaches and managers, etc.
Well, I think if we approve girls as an official team, we're making the commitment when the time comes. If we have enrollment, if we have a separate team, then we're going to support that through the coaches and.
So if we form this, if we form a team, say, we do this next, uh, week, would there be opportunities for these girls outside of the P I double A boys?
There are girls, um, competitions going on right now. I have a schedule of them. I don't have it with me, but there is a schedule. I know, um, I know North Allegheny High School is putting on a a girls high school tournament. Um, Butler is supposed to be having a girls squad this year. So, you know, I suppose our girls could attend an event, you know, if they so chose. So there is some competitions going on currently for girls, um.
Because I thought that might just be something the board would wanna know, like, maybe writing charters, sending these people to Harrisburg, you know, that kind of thing.
I mean, I don't think we ever have gotten to the point where we intended to go to any girls events this coming season. I mean, I think it's, we're more looking towards the future when it is sanctioned.
I have a question. Uh, if we approve this girls team and we have girls that join our wrestling team, do these girls wrestle against boys?
They can until it is sanctioned because it's a sport.
That's the same. So our girls, I mean, just because there's girls on the team doesn't mean that the team is now a girls team or a boys team. It's just a wrestling team and they all wrestle together. Correct? They all practice together. They all go to the same competitions. They all go to the same tournaments. Just like football with the girl that we have on football's one team and they play against boys.
And the only difference is, like you said, if it got sanctioned, they would practice together. And then let's say we were wrestling Northwestern and they didn't have a girls team that night. Then our girls could either choose to wrestle as part of the guys team or they could choose to just not wrestle that night.
And all of those things would be records and whatnot would be kept for specific, you know, a girl side once it becomes sanctioned.
Yep.
At at that point. So if we, again, if we did this then for this, would that take effect this year, this calendar year? Or, I mean, the team could be created, I would say.
It could be, but it.
Practical terms, there really would be a separate.
Practical terms, no, yeah, because it's not sanctioned.
Fair, fair, yeah.
Um, I guess I have a question, going back to the tournament buses and the number of competitions. If we have a little district that does not have a, a female team, are we obligated, once we have a sanctioned female team, to provide as many competitions for the female team as we do for the male team? So would we be obligated to have them travel to other locations if they wanted to compete further away so that they have the same number of competitions that our male team has?
I don't know. That's off my head. I would think they would still be able to wrestle as part of the boys team until more schools had a girls team. It almost reminds me of golf in a way. If if we had a one or two girls that wanted to play golf, and that's not enough for a girls team, they can still play on the guys team. They can still compete on the guys team, go to all those matches. We can also send them as individuals to girls matches. And then, uh, once the playoffs get here, they can choose if they wanna stay in the guys playoffs or if they wanna go to the girls playoffs. And it's very similar to me because they're both very individualized sports, but that's how they treat girls golfers.
And I al- and I also believe, and tell me if I'm wrong, but they go by competition points. So like in wrestling, in a normal duel meet, you would have one match to wrestle. But say the way the way they're talking is this girls sport is growing. They're doing it a little bit more tournament based. So Warren's having a tournament this year. So if you sent a girl to Warren and she got four matches, wouldn't that be the equivalent is if she wrestled in four duel meets? I I I believe that they count these competition points in a manner that you get more points at a tournament than a single meet, from what I was told.
Any other questions from the board?
Steve, real quick, just if we would decide to become, I guess, for lack of a better term, one of the one hundred, how does P I double A find out about that? Is there something we have to send them or something official to notify them?
I would have to read the sanctioned P A a letter again.
The sanctioned, they told me that basically P I double A is working with this group. The P, the sanctioned P A is tracking the number of school boards that adopt the team and then just reporting that to the P I double A.
It's almost like a petition. They wanna see those, that list of one hundred. So once that list is one hundred, they'll take it to P I double A.
And they would substantiate, they would substantiate that through our minutes that are posted publicly. They could pull that off the website to show the resolution.
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Farrell.
Um, what are the Mercy D coaches saying about this? Have you involved them in this conversation?
Actually, I'm not.
Yeah, I've talked, yeah, we talked to Isaac about it and he 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 said he's for it.
Yeah, I can imagine that.
He he said.
It's uncomfortable for everyone.
Yeah, he said he's all for it.
I I'm just saying, just to make sure we're all on the same team, having the same conversation. I think you all need to sit down with the coaches to say, here's what we're proposing for the next board meeting next week for.
Yeah, we've talked to Coach Dyke about it.
Yeah, I would, I would include all of you and Isaac, just so Steve's on the same page too.
Okay, we need to bring our, uh, committee meeting to a close. So what is the board's wish? To have this as a resolution for next week? Is the board in consensus and agreement that this is the direction we'd like to go to provide a wonderful opportunity for our female athletes?
Yes.
So without objection, we'll have this resolution on for next week. On behalf of the board, gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening. Mr. Carter, thank you for your helping facilitate this. Uh, is there anything else from the board before we close?
No, just congratulations on all the fundraising you're doing. It's a great thing for the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you to the board for your discussion for both of our topics tonight. Thank you, gentlemen, for your attendance.
Thank you.
Uh, and we will close our committee meeting and we'll open the board meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you. We're adjourned till seven o'clock. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wasburg area school district where we are student center and future focus for world-class education. The board work session for October eleventh is now called to order. Would you please rise for the pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Blazer.
President.
Mrs. Farrell. Here. Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Matson.
Here.
Mr. Morvick.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Here.
Mrs. Town.
Here.
Mr. Pushcheck.
Here.
Dr. Pushcheck.
Here. Thank you for the roll call. This time, the chair recognizes the superintendent of schools, Mr. Berlin, for score reports for next week. Mr. Berlin.
Thank you, Dr. Pushcheck. Um, I don't have a large COVID report tonight, uh, but if you could just pull up our website, Mrs. Kelly. And then, uh, we've started posting the, uh, Corona dashboard. Let me click on that. And we've been updating, I I, this was something I built in Excel out of, uh, the spreadsheets that we're using to track. So the administrators can actually look at this dashboard in real time, like as soon as things are entered, the dashboard updates. Um, I I tried, I was working with Matt Harmon, trying to get that embedded into the H T M L and did succeed, but I was worried about the security of it. Because every now and again, I could, I could get it to go somewhere that it shouldn't. Um, and it's kind, and Matt looked into it, comes down to Office three sixty-five settings. There's, they're a little bit buggy when you embed a spreadsheet. So we just update this at least once a day, sometimes more. Um, so tho- those were our numbers. Um, it does seem that things have kind of crested a little bit. And a lot of that, I believe, is students, is putting the students up in lunches. Um, we really saw some results from that right away. And the only other COVID news I had, uh, the Erie County superintendents met with the health department director, Melissa Lyons, on Thursday. We had made a proposal to the health department that they consider piloting in our area a test and return program for students. Because we're all quarantining a lot of healthy students that don't end up getting sick or getting COVID. Um, but the CDC regulations say you test day five, you can return day eight. We were saying, you know, if they're not symptomatic, can we just test them right away and have them return each day? We just wanted her for symptoms. Um, but she said that she's not willing to entertain that at this time. Um, she said, maybe if all the school districts were doing pool testing. Um, and I and I said to her, you know, I I understand that, but we we just don't feel we would get enough participation in pool testing. And you may have seen that article in the Erie newspaper, they were talking about how not many s- school districts or schools across the state have entertained that. Um, because people have strong feelings around testing and COVID and all this. Uh, and, you know, and we thought, like everything else, we've had our experience, um, mine in in the district here and the other superintendents. It's it's about fifty fifty, fifty percent of the people went vaccinated, fifty percent don't, fifty wanna wear masks, fifty percent don't. And I, we we really think that the pool testing would break along those same lines. So that's why we're kind of just sitting on that right now. I haven't moved forward with it uh, just because I don't know how useful that date it would be. So I shared, you know, my thoughts with her on that. She said that she understood. Um, she said, maybe as conditions change, she would reconsider. So that, we did have success there, but I think maybe we started a little bit of a dilemma. Um, and that's all I have for tonight, Dr.
Any questions for the superintendent from the board?
Dr. Pushcheck, I just have one comment.
Yes, Mrs. Farrell.
I just wanna thank, uh, Mr. Berlin for getting that dashboard up. I've actually heard comments from several people. Um, just being appreciative and feeling like it is very, um, open and public and just keeping everything out there, kind of what the state of the district is. So thank you for, you know, getting that up there.
You're very welcome. Thank you for those comments, Mrs. Farrell. Uh, there are no guests or citizens that have signed up to address the board this evening. Uh, Mr. Berlin, anything else under superintendent's report?
Uh, none. Um, well, except that next week we will have a school report for, uh, from the high school.
Okay, thank you. Um, that will bring us to bring us to the business administrator's report. The chair recognizes Mrs. Vicky Bending, the business administrator for her report. Mrs. Bending.
Thanks, Mr. President. For tonight, I have the treasurer's reports. Uh, general fund, cash in the bank, as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, seven million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars and two cents. In the capital projects fund, there's thirty dollars and eighty-six cents. And then the cafeteria fund, there's three hundred twenty-three dollars and three hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and seven cents. Um, the year-to-date question versus actual report will be ready for next week, as is the cafeteria profit and loss. Uh, the bill lists for this evening, uh, checks already written for general fund totaling forty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents. Those are checks since the last board meeting in September. Um, cafeteria checks already written, one thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. And the senior high school activity fund has sixty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars and fifty-four cents in that account. The rest of the reports will be ready for next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Bending. Are there any questions from the board for the business administrator this evening? Thank you, Mrs. Bending, for your report. Next item for next week, you'll be asked to consider the state police school district memorandum of understanding. Is there any discussion on the memorandum of understanding? Mr. Paris?
Could you just give us an overview? I was trying to read through it.
Okay, so we, this is, this is in public school code that we have to have a memorandum of understanding with our first responding, um, law enforcement. So every three years, we have to update our memorandum of understanding with the state police. Uh, I think, yeah, did I send that document out to anybody? Yep. Um, if you, it's the same document that the state police have used with all the school districts for years. Um, which we simply just need to show that we've, uh, reapproved it. And then I'll I'll get the the state police commander of Troop B to sign it as well. But simply just need to show that we've, uh, reapproved it and I'll, I'll get the, the state police commander, uh, Troop B to sign it as well.
Any further questions or discussion on the state police MOU? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration for next week. Chair recognizes Mr. Marty Pushcheck for finance. Mr. Pushcheck.
Mr. President, uh, at this time, uh, one item for consideration for the agenda next week. We'll be asking the board to approve, uh, the following transfers on the monthly budgetary transfer from the budget versus actual, according to its outline. And it's all at this time.
Any questions or discussions on the one finance item for next week? Hearing none, without objection, that will be on the agenda for your approval next week. Thank you, Mr. Pushcheck. Chair recognizes Mr. Josh Paris for buildings and grounds. Mr. Paris?
No items at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. Chair recognizes Mr. Jeremy Blazer for personnel. Mr. Blazer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Four items that we'll be considering next week. P one is Kelly substitute additions. Names are listed below. P two, appointments. I assume we're going to have some names to consider for some appointed positions. Uh, P three, conference requests, approve the requests as listed. And P four, leave requests, approve the teacher, it will not be believed requests.
Thank you, Mr. Blazer. Mr. Berlin, could you, uh, comment on the status of our P two appointments, please?
Certainly. Um, so P two, to approve the assistant pandemic coordinator, that's the health department grant funded position. That we, we really could use the help. Uh, and we have, we're going to be interviewing four very qualified applicants this week. We, we actually had several nurses apply. Um, so I think we're going to end up with a, a quality person there. And I think all of, all of the applicants live in the district, which is, is ideal. I, I'd like to see a medic, someone with medical knowledge. There's also a community member. Because I think they'll be more trusted in the, in that position. And then the elementary teacher, this is actually a retirement that we had not filled. Because our numbers, I, I think in second grade, uh, are just on the cusp of what we think is acceptable. What we're having a difficult time with right now is substitute teachers. It's all but dropped off. Now, we're, we're interviewing, or we're approving Kelly substitutes, but all the school districts that use Kellys are approving these same substitutes. So they might not be somebody that intends to ever sub here. So our fill rate from Kelly's is, is down right now. And that's just due to the, the statewide absolute critical shortage of teachers and substitute teachers. It's, it's really becoming an issue. So what we plan to do is bring, um, this element, uh, elementary teacher on because first of all, I think we're going to need it next year because the class sizes in second grade have grown since the beginning of the year. We had more enrollment. So we thought, but in the interim, uh, this person can help with floating and subbing because on any given day, you know, we have two to three teachers out for illness or whatever the case may be. So we know that we'll have a highly certified person, an elementary person in front of the kids when they do have to have a sub. Uh, we also have several maternity leaves lined up, um, throughout the course of the year. So she can be used to kind of move in and out of those as needed. So that's, uh, that's our thinking on bringing on another elementary teacher.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Any further discussion on any of the four personnel items listed? Mrs. Town?
For the Kelly Education Staffing Substitute Company, do we ever go with anyone else? I know we have, there's a shortage across the, the country, but do we ever use anybody else but Kelly?
There's nobody in this area that I'm aware of. They're like, uh, only game in town. We actually, we used to have our own subs and that pool started to dry up. So we went to Kelly's because most of the school districts, uh, in Erie County are using Kelly's. And they were gobbling up all the substitutes. So when we went to them, I think it was five or six years ago, they had the biggest pool of subs and it was the best place to go.
And our fill rates at the time were exceptional.
Yeah, they were even ninety percent. I mean.
But they're seeing the same problems that districts that don't use Kelly services are seeing. There's just not a pool of teachers that are going to be a substitute. It's, it's a statewide problem.
Yeah, so we, at the high school and the middle school, you know, we have teachers that are on planned periods. Um, and oftentimes we can hobble together a series of teachers that are willing to be paid on the plan to sub. It's a little more difficult over here at the elementary because those elementary teachers, you know, they only get thirty minutes or with the kids all day. And they really need that break to take care of some things. Um, so it's harder to do that fill-in procedure down here. So one of the internal capacity things we've been doing is, uh, we've occasionally broken up classes. So if there's one fourth grade teacher out, we'll break that class up and distribute, you know, three to four kids into the other rooms. So they're at least getting their regular math and reading instruction of the day. But even, even with that, it's not, it's not quite enough.
Anything else for personnel? Mr. Paris?
Has there been any districts breaking away from Kelly, like going above their rate to get subs?
Erie school district did.
They have a lot?
No.
Would we pay them? Pay the highest?
We're, we're the highest right now.
We have to pay Kelly fee, I'm assuming, on top of our.
Right, so we, we, we break even because if it's our subs, we've got to pay Peasars, Medicare, social, you know. So, but, and their fee is pretty close to that. So it's, it's, it's like an even Steven.
Their fee right now is actually a little, with the increase in the Peasars rate, it's actually a little bit less than what we would pay if they were out there on subs.
We, we may have to try.
I just wondered, like, everybody goes to the big, you know, we have all the subs and then all of a sudden, nobody's getting a sub. And then almost think when you're at that tipping point, you're almost better off pulling back from that service and trying to buy your subs yourself. But, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, this is, there's a shortage of flavor everywhere.
The problem with that is, is that there's, with Kelly services, in theory, they're supposed to be the best at recruiting and getting people to come in.
Right.
We're not in the business of recruiting other than putting out an advertise, you know, an, an ad in the newspaper. I don't know where else we would collect, um, substitute teachers other than putting an ad in the newspaper or, you know, putting it out on our sign or that kind of thing. Additionally, if retired teachers want to teach, they can go to Kelly Subs Services and teach without jeopardizing their pension. If they came here, we would have to jump through a whole bunch of hoops to get Peasars to wave, to say that, yeah, they're, it's an emergency.
I just wondered if you put a sign out and said, hey, Waspsburg's paying a hundred and fifty a day, comes up for us, bypass Kelly. But I don't know if you'd get anybody anywhere.
Well, you, you might initially and then the next, then become like the airplane ticket wars, you know.
Right.
Could we do something similar like you just stated, which I think is a great idea, hiring that one teacher to sustain that and financially handle that? And put a teacher in the elementary school, one in the middle school and create that position and to fill in.
That may be the solution or part of.
Yeah.
A permanent utility infiller.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and, and we've, we've talked about that a little bit. I know, I know, uh, Union City went to that model. So that may be something, as we watch what happens this year, that we need to consider.
So much stability.
It's a full-time job and you're going to handle all the classrooms, you know, and see everybody and know everybody.
Give you five different classrooms a day.
It would, it would be.
Yeah, give you movement, but we, we might have to go there, so.
Something to try and see what would work.
True.
Any other things, any other further discussion on personnel? Hearing none, those items will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Blazer. Uh, chair recognizes Mrs. Amanda Farrell for policy. Mrs. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item, PL one, which is the second reading, uh, to approve the second reading of the following policies for next week, please.
Any discussion on the two policies for second reading? Hearing none, those will be on the agenda for your consideration next week. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell.
Thank you.
Uh, before we move on, I would assume we would put the girls wrestling under athletic and extracurricular when we get to that point. Where would we put the elimination of the activity participation fee? Would that be under policy or also under athletic and extracurricular?
I think it would be athletic, extracurricular, just because it's referenced in both those individual board named policies.
Okay, I just wanted to do that before we went on to policy. So, Mr. Mattson, we'll add those two when we get to your spot. Thank you. Uh, back to the agenda. The chair recognizes Mr. Stephen Morve for curriculum. Mr. Morve?
Mr. President, we'll have one item, uh, presently on for the agenda next week for the Barber National Institute linkage agreement between, uh, them and, uh, ourselves. Waspsburg Erie School District has outlined.
Any discussion on the, uh, agreement under curriculum? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda, uh, next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Morve.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Tara Pound for technology. Mrs. Pound?
I have no attendant items for next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. Chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee for transportation. Mrs. Lee?
Thank you, Dr. Blazer. Um, I have one agenda item for next week. Is transportation required? And it's going to be, the transportation request and ratification of field trips since last meeting is outlined.
Any questions or discussion on the one transportation item for next week? Hearing none, that will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Chair recognizes Mr. Sean Mattson for athletic and extracurricular. Mr. Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple items under athletic and extracurricular this evening. Uh, for next week's agenda, approval of the volunteer list, maybe one or eight, yeah, maybe one. And then the athletic resignation, all to be, um, next season, plus additional the girls wrestling and the sports activities.
Okay, so there'll be four items under athletic and extracurricular for next week, the two items listed. And then we will add the resolution for girls wrestling and we will add the resolution for the elimination of the participation activity fee. Any further discussion on those four items that will be on the agenda next week for your consideration? Hearing none, those four will be on the agenda next week. Thank you, Mr. Mattson. We have nothing under miscellaneous. Erie County Tech School Report, Mrs. Lee?
Thank you. I will have a small update for next week.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we did not meet until October twenty-seventh for our next meeting, so I won't have a report next week. Bring us to board correspondence and dialogue. Uh, I would like to welcome, we have a student in the audience tonight. Attending for a class.
Yep.
Welcome.
Government solves, government class.
We'd like to welcome you. You're the lone audience person.
There are supposed to be more, but they helped, they helped on it.
All right, well, we're glad you're here. Thank you very much. Anything from the board this evening? I appreciate the board's willingness to come to our committee meetings prior to this meeting. Please be reminded, we'll have two meetings, uh, next week. Prior to, uh, one will be a policy committee meeting, one will be a finance committee meeting prior to the regular meeting next week. I would like to thank Mrs. Farrell for making arrangements to phone in. Thank you for, uh, the district to make those arrangements. Amanda, thank you. Okay.
We didn't adjourn.
I think we lost her.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Any, uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you for everyone that attended our meeting.